Good evening, everybody. It is just after 5:00 on 16 November 2022. And this is the usual monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees at the Newbury Town Library. In attendance today is, well, myself, Alexandra Burke, Chair of the Board, and...
Richard Raven, Trustee.
Teri Littres, Trustee.
Beth Sinami, Trustee.
And...
Erin Thompson, Director.
From the library, great. The first item on our agenda is a review and approval of the minutes from our meeting of October 19. Has everybody had a chance yet to look at these minutes and review them?
I did.
I almost have.
Okay. Any corrections or amendments to be made to these minutes as we have them?
No.
Okay, I move approval.
Sure.
Approved unanimously. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the report from our Director, Erin Thompson. Erin, it's all yours.
All right. I'll try to move through things relatively quickly because there is a lot in this. There's a lot for this year. We have a couple of upcoming deadlines that are kind of fast and furious. Long Range Plan that was due last year is the most important one, as this needs to be completed and voted on by the Board within about the next two weeks because the budget request letter has to speak to the Long Range Plan. And we don't have the Long Range Plan on file. So the budget request is due probably December 19th, and that also has to get approved by the Board. So I do have draft here of the Long Range Plan. I know what people may want to look at it a little bit closer.
Also in attendance... Hello, Margaret.
There it is.
He's right behind us now.
It's right behind me.
Do you want to wave?
All right, so as far as deadlines, do you want, is it okay if I just pick up where...
Oh, gosh, of course. I don't want to wave.
So the Long Range Plan, there is a draft put together that is based on community feedback and SOAR exercises with the community, with staff, with the Board. So if you can all take a look at the copy, and I can email it out, Dick Raven has already been able to kind of give it a glance, right? I'm not how sure how much you were able to dig in and saw some of your feedback.
A lot. I mean, I didn't add anything to it, but I refocused how some of it was written.
Yep.
Did people have that version?
This version takes, should be taking into account your notes as well as Dorothy's notes, and then some continued work by me. So it's the most I was working on it up until an hour ago. And I can email it out at the end of this meeting if anybody reads further that way, too. So, Long Range Plan was due last year. This affects our ability to write our budget request because it has to talk to the Long Range Plan. That's on file, so we need to get that on file and approved by the Board officially. The budget request is going to be due probably on December 19th because typically Tracy has her deadline be the Monday before Christmas. So I guess I don't have those materials live, but it doesn't change much. I just need to find out what the call is. And then the budget request needs to speak to the Long Range Plan. So I have a working draft of that, but it's not ready to give to you all yet. The action plan, I got an extension on from the MBLC, so I'm going to worry about that after the new year. So that's good.
I will, pardon me, I didn't look carefully enough. Have you already sent that out as an email, or is...
No, I haven't. I was working on it right up...
No, that's fine. I'm just wondering if it's a document I should have printed out today.
Not at all, yeah. So on that, I probably need to ask you all if we can have an extra meeting, number one, which would be if we look at two weeks out from now, that would be November 30th on a Wednesday. And then typically on the third Wednesday of the month, but that December meeting would be just after the budget request is due, so I'll have to bump that one up as well. So there would be two meeting dates to schedule in the future in order to get these approved and then submitted on time. If that makes sense. So we're working a little bit backwards, just for me to start off this way, but I can, can I make the request now that we decide on the dates?
So if I'm lucky, I'm not here. I have a trip to Savannah.
For both states?
From 30th to, I think the 2nd.
The 30th of November to the 2nd of December?
Yeah, I think so.
That's three days?
That's only three days.
No, it's one.
So I'll be looking at November 30th and December 14th.
Yeah, November 30th. No, I'm leaving on, I'm leaving on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so whatever that is.
23rd, 23rd.
Yeah, sorry.
This next week.
To the, what's the Sunday?
It's a week from today.
What's the Sunday that week?
The Sunday, 27th.
What?
27th.
No, another...
Another week?
One more week?
Yeah.
Sunday of the 24th.
The 24th.
All right, I have to, I'm sorry, we don't have the, it's not worth boring you with, but it's a trip that's hovering and not yet landed.
That's okay. So it looks like you will be here for 14th in December.
Yeah.
Just not for the 30th. So for the 30th, we just need three, right?
Correct.
To vote for.
That will be important.
So I'm sitting in the afternoon, I can do it.
Okay. Is 5:00 too late?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
I'm over the house.
All right.
I'll be here.
You're looking good so far. Okay, all right, awesome. So that's four.
I just never know.
All right, so then we're looking at the 30th at 5:00, and December 14th at 5:00. And we should, with those dates, we should be able to bang these out, I hope. And I'm...
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
The December 14th, are we making that a normal trustees meeting instead of doing the third week?
Yes, that'll be normal. We'll probably start off with the budget request and get that set. Needs to get, I'd be submitting it probably by Friday.
Okay, and that's at 5:00 as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then leading up to these, I'll be sending you all, you know, final drafts and whatnot, so you can, you don't have to evaluate in the meetings.
Okay. That is the same date as the Genealogy Club, the second Wednesday of the month.
For the 14th?
For the 14th.
Okay. We could bump it up to 3:30, I just, I think you can't make the difference.
I know, but I am such a wild card that I don't want to stop you from meeting, so... I mean, if I could get here in time to vote, if that would help, but no, I can't come into a 3:30.
Okay.
But don't make plans because of me.
Okay.
But can we not use another space within the building?
It's not that, Teri is part of the Genealogy Club, so she helps.
She has to be there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For years.
I was unsure. I wasn't able to go because this meeting constantly got scheduled at the same time as that.
Okay.
And it was very confusing because I had done a lot of ideas for it, so...
Yeah.
So 3:30, we're changing it to?
On the 14th?
Yeah.
And then, would you be able to look at any of them, Teri, ahead of time and give the email?
I will. With that exclamation point.
I absolutely will.
Send your proxy.
All right, awesome. Okay, so I do have one other action item that came up. I learned from the Assistant Town Accountant that the trustees need to vote annually for the budget amounts the Director's allowed to spend from the funds. And as you recall, we went through like how much is spendable, and Alex was in the meeting with me with Town Accounting to figure out that it's really the interest that our balance is. Town gives me a balance sheet of the funds, this is really the interest that's spendable, not the entirety of fund. But Lillian found that it is, I think, I want to say she sent us part messages as well, that the Board votes on the sums to be spent. My request is that the Board allows for the total sums to be spent, as this provides the most flexibility. And as well, we have an excess of funds that has become problematic in asking for our budget request, because we really have too much money.
Two questions.
We got a huge donation from me, $75,000 last December. And between that and several other funds that haven't been spent, we have something like $40,000 in state aid, like it is, we have to start spending it, or they're not going to give us the money we need for salaries.
Can the trustees really exercise discretion on the Lois Smith Fund, which is part of the Friends, and Friends Own Funds, which are shown here?
The trustees cannot provide any discretion on the former Lois Smith Fund, it is now with the Friends.
Right, so it's here, though.
The funds are, I think I attached it in the email, it's this document from the Town, so it's only certain, there are certain funds that are investment funds, and they earn interest. These are part of what Diane...
I'm working off the old documents, Teri, I'm sorry.
These are part of what Diane, I think this was a separate question, talked to us about how she takes all of the investments and fulfills that whole...
I got it. I just had the question based on this somewhat more complete.
Right, this is, this even more.
Therefore...
Yeah. All right, so...
Let's move, I move that the Board approve for FY23, the expenditure of interest as declared for the various funds at our disposal.
Second.
And first, motion is approved unanimously, okay.
So once you have these minutes, I need to send them over to Accounting to show that it's been voted on. Okay. All right, next, this is as much as I can really say is what I put in the Director's Report, and that's probably as much as you can say as well. Regarding the union, the Town Administrator has been notified by the Teenagers of the library staff's intention to form a union. She advises that none of the trustees should approach the membership at this time. I am not obviously part of the union happenings because I am management.
Moving on.
But I wanted to let you all know, and I did get Tracy's permission to let you all know as well. Okay, moving on, I kind of went over the budget request, the Long Range Plan, the actual plan with you all, right? So we have our budget summary updates, which are starting to come together. We are now as...
Excuse me, I want to just go back for a second.
Oh, sure.
At some point, we have to work it out, the unionization, as it affects, we have to think about it, and so I don't know if this is the time to do it.
It's not because there is no, the meeting hasn't been set yet, there's no discussion points, there's no, even, they don't even have, they have, it's early stages, there's just no...
That's fine, I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that we were missing an opportunity to...
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know.
You'll report back to us then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the sooner, the sooner we have our first meeting, the better, because it's a little challenging because we're getting into budget request season.
Yes.
What do you can only...
I can only know what I know and do what I, you know, have numbers for, so that's what I'm doing. So the budget has changed to reflect the increases for the two part-time positions up to $19 an hour from $16.15 an hour. That excess is coming from state aid. So you'll see the green-yellow funds budget. I don't have anything in the right-hand column. And the reason is, last year, we had state aid salaries going to two other employees, and that was a breakdown where they got like, you know, the extra 87 cents or something as an hourly rate each pay period. So it was a complicated timesheet. But what happened at the end of the year, we had two open positions for quite some time, so I had salaries budget remaining, but we wound up using state aid, we didn't have to. So I'm going to wait till the end of the year before I spend this money, because maybe, you know, I won't have to for some reason, and I'd rather not if I don't have to. So that's why there's nothing over there. That'll be something that happens at the end of the year. So things are going along pretty well. I did speak briefly, personal policy revision request. Speak briefly with Diane, ask about the process to request a personal policy revision, specifically the policy that prevents full-time benefited employees from being paid for snow-weather active god-billing closures. The library has had numerous closures in its short history due to multiple pipe, like all these storm closures and the like. Problem with this is that when you're full-time benefited and you only have two weeks of vacation, your choices are, they take it out of your vacation, if you have any, or you have to make it up within 30 days. You close for two weeks, you can't do that.
The policy reads 45 days. How does it come to be 30?
Oh, because that's what my conversation with Diane was.
But the policy provided was indicating 25.
Regardless, staff have supplemental jobs, they have other functions besides here, and to expect them to drop everything and work extra hours to make up for this, this is just not done. It's not, it, it's just not done. It's a, in my view, a punitive, harmful policy, but certainly doesn't help me attract candidates to come work here. And it's been, it's a challenge with morale when this comes up this time of year, every year. Makes people stress about finances, what if we have an ice storm and we're out for a week? How am I going to do this? Can I pay rent? What's going to happen? I don't want to lose my two weeks vacation time. It's just not a good policy. So I outlined some of the issues with the policy. We did try to work on this six years ago, and I was involved then. And that was when they added the 45 days extension to make up work. I don't feel that's helpful, and it's, the big thing here is that it costs the Town zero dollars to pay people for time I've already budgeted for. There are no other libraries that do this, it's just, it's a policy that needs change. So I was told the HR Board had no appetite for this, to deal with it again, in those words. So I, I, my, my...
So I guess if they don't have an appetite, we don't have any money for them to have lunch.
Teri.
No snacks.
So my thinking walking away from that experience is that it needs not just be a letter, it's going to need to be a thing. It's going to need to be a well-written letter with the backing of the Board, of the staff, and we all go to the HR meeting in person, and we sit there in front of them, and we say, this is problematic, we want to request this change, here's our request for a change, and here's why.
But it's also more workers in the Town than just the library.
It does affect more people than...
I believe I asked when we had this conversation in the last meeting whether you'd made contact with these other departments to see whether it is an issue for them as well as us?
It's, I don't know who is in the same category, it's not a matter of public record. I don't know who's in the same category as, as the staff here, who's full-time benefited, who's part-time, who's salaried, but I don't know that to know who to talk to. I also know that this isn't going to make people happy. It already didn't. It didn't six years ago, and it's not now, so it's, it's one of those things that, I have so many fish to fry, I want to burn so many veggies.
What, what was the reasoning? Just because they don't feel like doing it, or...
Because we dealt with it six years ago, and I said, I know, I was part of that six years ago, but we, we didn't get the outcome that we wanted.
But there's new people.
And there's new people.
Right, so...
Yeah.
Just because you don't want to do it?
Yeah.
Well, okay, that's fine, I don't want to do a lot of things. Start not doing them.
I think we all need to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, like just show up and...
This is acceptable.
It should be a really easy thing because I'm not asking for any money for it, you know, it should...
Yeah, it's a no-brainer. And there are no other libraries in the consortium that do this?
No.
Of course that. And then when I looked at the policies and stuff...
No, so I cited, I have, and is it...
Other departments do have that.
I have...
But it's only us. Only our Town?
Yes, yes.
Because of all the policies that I looked at, nobody does it.
Right, right. Other departments within our Town have it.
Right, so it's a town problem.
It's one personal policy for the whole Town.
Right, there's different types of, this is like a broken record.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been doing this, and I know I've been pretty absent, completely put, I mean, really? Are we still having this conversation?
Yeah, we haven't solved it yet.
Okay.
And free for nothing, guys, I would anticipate that this is the burr under the saddle of the unionization drive.
Huh, I'm sure they have a lot of things, but, you know.
So I have in the end of this year, I went to the state of Massachusetts to see what their policy said, and I thought it was short and sweet and really simple. I like that one a lot.
Yes.
I had a second one that gives more power to the Town Manager, maybe if that helps ameliorate the situation, but...
He's emailed.
Where in the, the first one, policy of the state of Massa, where in the Commonwealth's policy did you find this?
I'll have to go look that up, I think I opened my thing.
Because it seems, if we're approaching the HR Board, FinCom, Board of Selectment, on the basis of conforming to Commonwealth policy, we might have better success in selling the thought.
If we use the state and say this, but I think she's suggesting that.
Yes.
Yeah, and this actually is in other Towns' policies.
The state one?
Yeah, almost worth a word.
Oh, nice.
Because I looked at this, I said, déjà vu? No. I must have read it somewhere, but yeah.
Great.
I'm sure, I've, I've seen it before, and, you know.
Okay.
So we need to find it, refer to CMR, whatever?
Oh, yeah, I, this is just for the Director's Report here. I have, like, so I guess my overall point is that we need to come up as a group with a document that outlines...
The document's right here.
No, with a document that outlines what our problems are with the current policy, why we want to change it.
I don't concur.
That's what Diane told me, she wants us to give the motion out in the request for provisions.
Oh, all right.
So we have to tell them why we want to change it, and kind of back up, back up our, our words, and then, you know, like you said, have the official link to where exactly this is from in the...
Chapter and verse, and cite it.
Yes. So in light of the staff unionizing, it might make sense to pause us until we know what ended up.
I think in response to that, I think we just need to move forward intellectually, conceptually on this whole issue, and get ourselves sorted out. What troubles me most is as follows. Within the current policy, making up a lost snow day or partial snow day within 45 days of work seems to me a doable thing. What concerns me...
It's not.
What concerns me is that a prolonged closure of a week is, Blizzard 78 kind of thing, would really burden the staff trying to make up two or three missed days.
It would, but it's also, this is in my budget, and it's not done elsewhere. This is a benefit that we should be giving.
We're all agreed, it's unfair.
Whether they can make it or not.
It's unfair to the, to the staff that they're singled out on this exception basis by the personal policy of the Town of Newbury, which brings me back to the first point I made. We should be advocating for compliance with state standards. I don't find the thought about attracting and retaining particularly persuasive. We've got people, damn good people, and they keep coming in.
Well, we have an average of 14% turnover over the last six years, sometimes it's 29% turnover, so I would disagree. The reasons that people have left here have to do specifically with wages and policies like this.
Okay, one thing at a time, though, we're talking the emergency closure policy at the moment, you know, compensation, yeah, that's another whole, unfortunately...
I have a question. They ask specifically for reasons, like what you have here, so we should include every reason.
I think so.
Whether they think it's, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's not forcible enough, but...
I think the language can be...
We need to do every, every reason.
Could be toned down, made more effective.
I don't think she has a problem with that, really. I mean, it's just, it's, to me, you've listed reasons, basic reasons, if you can think of other reasons, great, but we have to include that in the document that they requested. Is that correct?
Right.
All right, so it's, it's a reason. It may not be high, you know, a high-value reason, but it's a reason.
And you know, Beth, you're so right, because the HR Board states in its mission statement to attract, retain, motivate...
Right.
But let me give, listen to you, let me give you just one small example. Some employees have other jobs to supplement the low pay at the library.
Bingo.
So you, so don't hit, you don't have to hit that number, they have, they have other jobs, which means the scheduling is possible, and we don't use it as an argument about pay in that, in that sentence. We're trying to argue this sort of narrow, get a narrow decision about why this is important, and I feel that these other issues are hugely important, but they don't influence, you know, if they had better jobs, but they still had part-time jobs, I mean, better salary, but still had part-time jobs, it would still be a problem to make up. If they got all the salary they wanted and still had another part-time job because they're only...
Oh, I see, so...
So the fact that they're working for low pay is not an argument in favor of changing the snow day policy.
But it does not retain or attract employees.
That isn't, that's a different issue, that's appropriate, but I'm saying, when you load the sentences with other grievances, they're going to get, they're going to get upset, and they may get upset anyway, but we can, we can...
This is not anything I planned to present to them, it was for you all, so that we could start a conversation.
And it's starting.
Yes.
I hear you, I'm just saying in terms of thinking...
And I totally agree with you.
So orient your thinking around the narrowest possible...
Yeah, short and sweet.
...argument, so we're not trying to kill more than the board. So we're not trying to kill more than a bird.
Yes, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
More than one stone.
Yeah, I agree.
Not that we're ever going to surrender the effort to enhance compensation for staff, however...
Right, and they'll focus on that. Because that'll, you're right, it'll get them annoyed, and they'll want to talk about it. And that's not the issue of this.
No, it's not.
I would also say, the fact that you don't know if any of the library does it is different from saying, "No, the library doesn't."
Okay.
And we need to pin that down.
It's based on your research.
Yeah, we can do a more formal survey of every single...
Because if you say, "I don't know," doesn't indicate that you've done...
The point you're making straight away.
Yeah, you've gotta include that, that you've researched. Based on our research, it's not, it's not the same...
Can someone, this is for you of mine. Is there some sort of admin for the consortium that could just answer this question without you doing all of this research?
I'll ask her, yeah.
I would think so.
There's the...
You have to do that. You have other things to do.
I just don't know if she has this information, but I'll...
Okay.
I'm in communication with her. I was talking with her about it. She was telling me that she actually thought that this was illegal in Massachusetts. She's like, "I don't even think that that's legal." And she is doing some digging to find out if it's okay to do it.
That would be wonderful.
That would be easy.
Yeah.
Simple, accurate on that.
So she's gonna let me know.
Maybe, but it won't make the town love you anymore.
No, it won't. Okay, so unfortunately, all of this, it was going on, but now needs to probably pause because we need to see how the dust settles with the whole union stuff and find out which way is up.
I think the thing that... Most alarming about the whole pause is if enhancement to compensation emerges from the process, we've got the budget, we've got for wages and salaries. Ain't gonna be no more money coming.
It's up to the union to take care of it.
Yeah, I don't know.
If they become unionized. That's their issue. They've got the lawyers, they've got the people. You know, that's not our issue.
Okay.
Honestly, it'd be nice if they didn't even unionize. I would think most organizations think it's better. I'm not saying pro or con it because I don't necessarily think it's better at this point. But the point of the matter is, is that why should we struggle to do something if... I would think the union would look at that policy and say, "You know, that's not legal." You know? So why should we, why should Erin get more, you know, enemies over there? If we really don't have to do that. There'll be other reasons.
If they become part of the Teamsters, they'll have to give lessons on eating donuts.
Oh, really?
You know, the... Look, I worked in Hollywood, which is heavily Teamsterized in production. And the joke was, "How do you know a Teamster is dying? The donut falls out of his hand."
Oh, wow. Wow. Learned something new every time you come. So that's, so do we have to agree that we're gonna hold on that?
Nope, not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. I had this thing written, and then things took a turn. So I, instead of, I just added that. And in light of this, we will pause.
You've stimulated the conversation, let us say.
Right, which is good because, you know, if everybody can have it in their desk of their minds, that's great.
Yes.
On to library building and grounds. We've come to a pause in the Aqua Funded Juggernaut project. Thank you again, Alex, for getting it started. Tracy emailed me and she let me know that as department head, I'm ultimately responsible for this project and so it's clear that I need to be in on all of the meetings that happen. And I need to run it. And I cannot do that at this time. The good news is, the project is not due until 2026. So we've got plenty of time.
We should be able to pick it up again in the new year.
Well, I hope to reevaluate my project in Dallas in the new year to see how to proceed. Things are already taking up the time slots. Future projects, I have to request a pause in any new projects at the moment because I'm overwhelmed with the amount of backtracking work that I need to do for all of these finances, all of these reports. It's an incredible amount of work and writing. And I have very new staff that I'm also trying to manage and train. So it's been overwhelming for over a year before I was, I became director. So I really have to ask and pause and reevaluate in the new year once I've been able to kind of put out some of these very large buyers that are on the table right now. For, let me see, the water bill. Except for the water bill, because that needs to happen now. So to update you on the water bill, is it literally, was it wanted to use water to be able to water their fields? And at the time, let's say, the highway department didn't think it would be a big deal, but the first bill that I got was over, it was larger than the entire bill we had for all of last year. So that came out of our budget, our building budget. So we need, I brought the invoice to their attention, so they're aware of it. But we don't have any action on it yet. I guess it was kind of like a wait-and-see. I kind of feel like we need to request, like, if this is gonna continue, we need two meters.
Yes, we should have had two meters.
Yeah, yeah. And if they can figure out a way that they can reimburse us for what's been spent, I mean, it probably can compare it last year and see what we spent.
A little bit higher. I think there were a little bit of raises, but, yeah.
But I'm sure we can figure that out. But they really should reimburse us.
Yeah, but you know, quarterly usage went from 1,100 cubic feet to 6,000 cubic feet during the project installation in immediate watering. And Mike is our witness that was puddling up out there. So either with a dual-meter approach or with some sort of internal reconciliation. We'll have another water bill to consider in February.
Yeah, but they shouldn't be using much more water. I think that's what I'm afraid of. They're gonna say, "We're not gonna be using much water anymore. We're not reseeding the field." So, but whether they use the water during the summers or not, I don't know. But I know that we're doing it twice a day, based on what the neighbors told me.
Yeah.
But, you know, to me, it's like, yeah, you said it wasn't gonna be much. We asked you specifically. We said we wanted a separate meter, and you assured us. So who's gonna pay for that? Because you have a budget.
Right, right.
And that's a lot of money.
Right.
So I'm not sure how we progress with that.
And it was...
They'll make an internal adjustment. They'll reimburse us.
But we have to ask for them. We have to give them reasons.
Oh, we'll be on the case, just as we have. But right from the beginning, from your observation that this should not come out of library budget.
But it has already. So who will reimburse us? Does anybody know? I don't know what the procedure should be.
Annette, James, when they get to it, we'll replenish our funds.
Are you sure about that?
Have they said that?
Yeah, yeah.
And that needs to be in writing.
Yeah, sorry. Based on whatever.
Especially since there's signs all over the place saying, "No outdoor watering."
Yeah, yeah. But that's an issue for everybody who's trying to water, you know.
Good point, though, about putting it in writing.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Because they said it wasn't going to be much of an increase when we addressed it initially. It's not like we relax.
It's a tenfold increase.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a change.
But still, how do we go about getting that?
So what would the next step be?
Okay, so you're gonna take that?
Awesome, thank you, Alex.
No, I'll email James, and we'll copy everybody.
So that's a board of trustees thing to do?
We're responsible for the billing, are we not?
Okay, okay. Just checking.
Yeah, look at that, the budget tonight. We have to approve that expenditure.
Right. The other things are just a little... I still don't have a key. Oh, and you had updated me on this, so I'm supposed to have a key. I have...
You may have it in your collection.
That we don't know what they go to.
So we'll go through the key collection, determine that you don't have the key.
Right.
And we'll get them.
You'll be walking around like a jail warden with all the keys on you, Val.
So is that a job that somebody else can do for you? Because you don't have the time for that kind of thing.
I don't, it's not urgent either, but yes. Anybody who wants to test keys...
I'll be glad to do it.
Thank you, Terry.
I mean, some of these.
While you're at it.
Yeah. Terry, there's gonna be a whole list you're gonna do.
But I just...
I have no new information on the public restroom door adjustment for accessibility. I have no new information on the replacement of the staff wall oven microwave that has broken. And no new updates on any slits. So, and I don't expect to have updates on that probably until we get closer to the end of this fiscal year when we see how much of the budget gets spent through the winter for the... So the DPW has a building expenditure of 55,000, which is this one. It's my budget, but I don't manage it. They manage it. And so we kind of see at the end of the year, after they've paid the heating bills, gas bills, water bills, all of those things was left to do repairs.
The electric bill runs about two grand a month. I don't know what the gas bill is. Well, I guess that includes gas. It's a single bill from the National Grid, which provides both. But that is not insignificant.
No, and they're expected to go up by 30%.
Yeah.
So that 55,000 is assaulted.
It is on mine.
Yeah, it's a separate line item on my municipal report. And I feel like it was low, but my last was, it was a quarter, so it included the summer, so it would be low. I'll keep an eye on that one. I can report on that the next...
Yeah, just let us know what's going on with that. That is one area. The facilities maintenance arena in which we can, I would hope, approach Tracy, FinCom, and the Board of Selectmen with an enhancement for the allocation. We can't escape the 30% or whatever turns out to be. So we need to be top of mind on that as we work up our budget requests. But Erin will have to guide us as to what she wants done on wages and salaries.
Right, I have, I can talk about that a little bit.
Before you move on to something else, I just want to say about the accessibility issue on the bathrooms. Hogan Regional Center has an outreach that does things like that because it affects developmentally disabled, et cetera, et cetera. And they aren't charged for doing that. I would think it might be useful to make a request there.
Okay, Hogan Regional, familiar with that, of course. And what within Hogan Regional?
It has a community outreach program for all kinds of things like that. It's the adaptive equipment program section. And I, it's an age thing. I can't remember the exact title of that department right now. But I'll give it to all of you. And they do use that.
What is the Hogan Regional Center?
It is, it is in Danvers, right near, same area where Danvers psychiatric hospital was. And it was a centralized residential school for developmentally disabled. It has, many people are now in group homes, not in the institution itself. Be pushed for doing that. I haven't worked there in 10 years now, so it's all moving on. But that was part of what I did. And they own or rent housing, and then also I get...
Great.
They may be able to give us some guidance on folks who would do it.
Oh, well, I think so, yes. I don't know who the director of that part of Hogan is now, but I can find out.
Awesome.
That'd be great.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be great. I failed with three requests to folks, contractors, who stayed on websites that they do this kind of work. Opening, and no response, just died out there. And that was months ago. So of course I let it go.
All right. I'll give you that information.
I have one.
Did you want me to help you with the keys since you're taking on something else?
The keys aren't, they're not urgent.
No, it's okay. It's okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, if you have a problem, let me know.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's all about accessibility, so I'm fine.
Very accessible.
Yeah. Okay, so programs. I have the November, December planned programs on here.
All right.
And Liz, our new information assistant, is skilled at complex fiber arts, like knitting, crocheting, all kinds of things. And so she has started back up what was our knitting group and now is now part of the buddies program. And that's, she, I think the first day, she even got three people back there, which was pretty good for the first day.
Who is doing that?
Liz, our new information assistant, who's awesome. She's just so well-written, well-organized.
I write the name.
Awesome, yeah. Dorothy's been working very hard for genealogy club and genealogy programs. And we have that one that's starting tonight in seven minutes, just so you know. I'm gonna try to go fast. All right, friends update. Harris Best brought in just over $900 last month, which is less than half of what it normally brings in. But this was expected because there were less than half the amount of donated apple items this year. The community just, they didn't give us much. And so they couldn't make us much. We also have fewer friends to work the event and planning and marketing and on the day of, so it was a bit smaller. They're hoping to add the soup contest back next year, which also brings in money and see, you know, if we can get things bigger next year.
The touch and trucks, I think, was a big success, though.
Yes.
I don't know where that went. I mean, I know it was there, but...
The little kids, oh, except for that.
All right, okay. The touch and trucks.
Yeah.
And they got to go in them and everything.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right.
I got nervous when I saw the big...
Fire ladder?
Yeah. And the little thing on the tires. I was like, "Oh, no, please don't let the kids go in there."
They didn't.
Yeah, and I didn't see a one go up there.
All right.
Oh, one other thing that I should have put in my report that I didn't. And actually, we're having a debut for our Newbury Historic Escape Room Saturday after Thanksgiving. The testers are needed that Saturday if you'd like to sign up. So it's a pretty cool thing. So it's a pretty cool thing. It's definitely sixteen and older, um, because our history in Newbury has some fairly salacious things that have happened. Um, so anyway, I'll throw that out there because we, we just decided that, um, I think yesterday at our staff meeting. Um, but it's a lot of fun. And it has exclusively to do with the history of the town.
Let's get to twenty-sixth.
November twenty-sixth.
Oh, I didn't get the date.
Yes, November twenty-sixth.
What time?
I think you can sign up for it online and choose your time. It takes about an hour, hour and a half.
At least.
I'll be starting in the morning. Are there windows I can crawl out of for the skin?
Yeah, really. Well, it is outside, an outdoor escape room, so the entire thing takes place outside.
Oh.
Um, and we will give you an iPad to help go through some of it, because some of it, it is partly multimedia as well.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, Katie has done fabulous job.
She really has.
We tested it out weeks ago, and, uh, of the fourteen stops or stations of the, of the escape room, we got through maybe eight.
I know.
We were clowns, for sure, but.
But still, whoever's coming, you know.
Really intense, really intense. What she's done is she's started with Elizabeth Morse, who was accused of witchcraft in Newbury, um, in eighteen eighty-eight. And she, Katie, has fantasized that you are Morse's companion, or husband, or spouse, or whatever. And you've been locked up with her, and you've got to get out, and you get out by.
She can just do a spell.
Exactly.
Yes, you know, she really works.
Winkle her nose, I've seen that.
You're witch, too.
Yeah. So she's, uh, she's done a fabulous bit of research, and it's great fun, and real solid history. I think the thing that stopped us most was the stupid lockbox for the one club.
Oh my God, it's so hard. Yep. This might be something to mention to the genealogy people.
Oh, yeah.
Um, they might want some testers and, and give it a go.
Is it a team of them?
You, yes, so you need like, typically you would want four or five people as a group to do it at one time, because you'll talk to each other and try to figure out where something might be, be looking around for clues, and things like that, so it should be a lot of fun.
Wonderful fun, I promise, it really is.
Uh, okay, oh, and the other thing that came up is that Town Hall has announced, um, their holiday party. They're closing all departments on Thursday, December twenty-second at one P M. So the library is one of them, and will be closing at one that day.
Really?
So that's for their.
So we can all go to the party?
Yeah, this, they did this last year, too.
Okay.
Um, so, and I double-checked with, um, Tracy, that, that included us, and she was like, oh, absolutely. You know, we want you to come. So that's really nice.
And that'll be over to Town Hall?
Yes, it will be in the new senior center at Coop.
In the?
At Coop, at Council on Aging.
At Coop, okay.
Um, so that'll be fun. Every time I go over there, that, the doors, it's not their open hours, and I can't go in, and just kind of look in the door. But, uh, it looks really nice.
Yeah, and you've, you've met Cindy, of course.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, she was at literally pumpkin bench.
She was. Courier, my God, that's an old, old Newbury name, so. What did, um, I thought it.
Oops, go ahead.
How we doing here? No, under other business, just a couple of thoughts when we get there.
Okay. Um.
Your feed.
So I do have a home delivery policy and guidelines, which has been divided into two separate documents, um, that I, Liz has completed. I can email these to you. I brought a couple of hard copies in case anybody wants it here, but I wanted to let you know that I will be sending it to you all. These need to get voted on by the board. Um, they aren't on fire at the moment, so I.
We can't, um. Is that what you were mentioning earlier when we were chatting? The meeting room policies?
That's part of it.
Okay.
And I, we have the community room policy update. I'm not sure where you and Dorothy were on that.
The meeting room, I can tell you.
Okay.
So, when I looked over the policy that the library produced, I decided to do a little research online and look at some other meeting room policies. And it became clear to me that, in fact, what we need to do is discuss content before we discuss style or, or issues. And I have, I printed out of, I think, three or four libraries from large ones like St. Louis to Warwick, Rhode Island, and then a small town in Ohio. And among the issues that I think, what I've decided, what I discussed with Alex, we have a subcommittee, because it'll be endless to try to figure this out at a trustee's meeting.
Right.
So he and I are gonna get together and figure out what we think is smart to have as content. But a couple of the things, just, you know, there are some libraries, two out of the three, which require trustee approval for any outside meeting that isn't library-sponsored. There are libraries that are very declarative about politics and religion in terms of what you can and cannot do, which we aren't. No library that I looked at declared with the A L A, in terms of a policy, in fact. And, and, and what I'd like to suggest is that instead of looking backwards in terms of what worked before, we think unfortunately to the future where things are not working so well in some places, and what would happen if it came, that came here. So, so there's a lot of sort of important philosophical discussion before we determine what we think should be, and then we can hammer out what we think is smart or not after that.
That sounds good. And you, will you work with Dorothy on that after you get to?
Yes, I thought, I thought that Alex and I as trustees should look at, uh, content, and then feed her in at some appropriate point, but instead of, when we're stumbling around in the dark at the beginning, it's not useful for somebody.
Absolutely.
And coming right down onto it.
Yeah.
The situation in Newbury Port with the Committee for Responsible Education, folks who wanted to use the library and post in the library, and were not able to, and wound up, you know, Kelsom, sort of the way of they're using the library and to post, and Sean Reardon, mayor over there, took down their wire.
It's the reverse of the forty-seventh Theses, or whatever it is. He took down the, the post on the, on the, on the wall. Yeah, and that's an interesting debate to have, what would we do in that circumstance?
Right.
Yeah, I don't know the answer yet, but I know we need to protect ourselves.
I have two other staffs. So Dorothy is covering community room policy. Liz has, um, done some great writing on home delivery policy, devising that and dividing it into guidelines and policy. Um, so I don't know if you want to do another subcommittee for that, and.
For which policies?
Uh, this is home delivery, guidelines and policy, um, which did need, it definitely needed an overhaul. Um, and then.
Wow.
Catherine is working on onboarding procedures and policies. I don't have those yet. She's just started those, but we have a lot of policies that need updating. I need some go back to like the nineties.
I worked on one, I can't remember what, but, uh, and sent you a revised something.
I think it was a guy, was it guidelines that? So the guidelines, I don't.
Collection policy was a, uh?
Yes.
Collection development.
There were two, there were two different documents, yeah.
By law, we had to have a collection development policy on the books.
Yeah.
Um, and we didn't. So that was one of the early ones. Um, these other ones are just kind of, either we didn't have them and we need them, but they're not a requirement, or they're just really outdated, like they go back a long time. And again, to your point, it kind of protects us to have the policies on record, and it really helps, um, the people on the front lines and dealing with the public to be able to like, answer questions and say, well, here on our website, you can look at our policy. This is why we do this, and this is why we do that, and be able to explain these things. So one of the things for this year that we're all working on as a staff is getting our policies kind of in a good place. So it's a lot of writing, it's a lot for you guys, too.
Yeah, but it's no wonder you're overwhelmed.
Uh, well, I'm not writing these, so, like I said. You know, I'm really.
You're thinking about them.
It's on your watch.
It's on our watch, but it's good. The, the staff is really working to get us organized, get us streamlined, get stuff written and online, both for staff and the public, you know. There's just a lot to do, but they're really motivated to do it, you know, which is awesome. Uh, so when they ask me like.
Earlier discussion about retaining, motivating, and compensating.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're, they're all hard workers. So that's, it's an awesome thing. So when Liz, who just took over home delivery, was, you know, it's really needs to get reworked. I was like, if you wanna.
I've said it a thousand times, and I'll repeat it, I cannot believe how hard folks in this place work for the compensation they receive. This is dedication, this is professionalism.
Yeah.
And, um.
Slash materialism.
You know, you go through the, you go through the ERIS report, and, and you look at the certifications, the M L Ss, it's awesome.
It is awesome. Um, so for the home delivery guidelines, I do have, um, everything that Liz has put together. I have looked it over. I think it looks really great. I don't know if you want me to just email it, and it's something that we can vote on.
Yeah, I think so.
Awesome. Awesome. All right.
Printed in the morning with the.
The turn.
Recently.
Yeah, good point. Uh, okay, let me see. Oh, and then you asked a question about how, I was thinking of positioning the budget request. This is, it's not on here, but we do have other business, so I guess I can put it over there.
Sure, do it.
Um, my thought is, we got a good increase last year for our salaries budget. It's unlikely we're gonna get more money again with salaries budget, and I've been told as much. So there are other areas that we do, so the M V L C just, um, had their increases come out to us, so they're gonna be paying more money for our memberships with them, um, because they voted on their budget, which is going to be larger, um, due to the times we're living in, and.
We paid them about eighteen thousand this past year.
Yeah, it's going up by a little over a thousand dollars.
From around nineteen.
When I looked at the figures, we're getting, I think it's over two thousand dollars, um, for a SLIN, S L I N grant, that comes off of what we're supposed to be paying. So it's actually supposed to be around twenty-one thousand, um, but we're getting money off.
What is the origin of the S L I N grant?
It's something.
Where's it come from?
The M V, uh, V L C, they take care of it. So I, I just found out about this yesterday afternoon.
Okay, okay.
Um, so I'm still learning more, but it's something that seems to happen automatically.
Considering, too, that we wound up in deficit, about seventeen thousand worth on materials acquisition, this F Y twenty-three that we're living through now, perhaps that's an arena within which we need to think about seeking an increase.
So because we have somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty thousand dollars in all of our other funds, we're not gonna get any money for materials. Um, so my, what I was thinking of doing, I think I mentioned this a while ago, and I talked to the head of the M V L C alone as well. Um, reallocating some of the materials money, I think it's gonna cost about fifteen thousand dollars. Take it out of materials and move it into salaries. That will allow me to give staff an increase of a dollar an hour for the next five years, and it'll cover it. What happens on the backend with materials is that we pay for that extra fifteen thousand dollars each year out of our funds. Like we're already doing for some of it, it'll just be a larger amount each year that's covered by the funds. It is uncomfortable because it, it's not sustainable, but it's one of the only ways, we have to pay down this money in order to get the town to give us, um, more money for salaries. We don't need more cash on hand. We don't need more money for books. We have it. We need more money for salaries. So.
Creative. Moving the walnuts around under the shelves.
Yeah, um, it's, I, it's super uncomfortable for me, um, to think about doing, because I only like to do stuff that is sustainable, like I know this is gonna be paid for year after year after year. What it does is give us five years to work with the town and try to get them to take more on under their umbrella, so to speak.
Under their allocations.
And again, if they become unionized?
If they become, yeah, then my budget request kind of blows up, so I just. I don't know what to do with the budget request.
It is what it is.
There's a couple of things, you know, a couple of little things I thought I'd ask you for. The budget request would wind up being a boat five, just under five thousand dollars decrease from the town on top of whatever their quota is gonna be. Um, and, and then to shift the fifteen thousand of our, uh, materials budget over to salaries.
And replenish materials.
With the funds.
Out of the various funds. But can we handle both the fifteen and the seventeen we've already lost?
We totally can.
We gotta do it.
A lot of money.
All right, then, fine.
Um, and the money hurts us, um, honestly, because we have it, so it's, it's just.
It's just not in the right.
All of them.
Yeah. Dick had brought that up the last time.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, they're not gonna give you more money if you have a ton of money over here.
Right.
And Dick has always said that, too.
Yeah, yeah.
He's sorry, always commented that, you know, they're, they're, you're not.
And it's reasonable, that's a reason.
And look at all the other town departments that don't have gift funds.
Exactly.
Right, this is a special, wonderful, special case, so libraries get.
It is, it really is, yep, yeah.
And we're only spending the, well, the interest, which is produced from the combined assets on hand of the town.
Not for gift and donations and not for state aid. So those are funds, but they don't qualify under the investment funds. The investment funds are only five funds. Um, so gift and donations and state aid, that's the whole amount.
Of the fifteen?
On the report, so I think, uh. Um, gift and do, oh yeah, I'm still waiting for one of the town reports to come in. It's somewhere around eighty-one thousand, um, in the bank entirely for gift and donations.
Eighty-one?
Uh-huh, for gift and donations alone, and that's not the interest.
And where is, where is that money? Who, who takes care of that money?
Uh, the town.
The town, okay.
So then, we have, and now we just got some more money for state aid. Um, that is now in the neighborhood of forty thousand dollars. That is the total.
The seven we just got.
Including that.
F Y I, the, um, library's funds are invested with, among other things, the town stabilization fund.
Yeah.
So, and, uh, the brokerage handling it is Bartholomew, which handles such funds for many municipalities, most of them, most of theirs on North Shore, so.
Um, so then there are other funds here that are, um, like Allison Outreeks, Frances Randall, Catherine Brown. We just saw their, those are investment funds. And so that, what you're seeing here is what's spendable, but there is the principal that is invested.
Now, those, some of those funds are restricted.
And they're restricted. Um, almost all of them, except Catherine Brown, are, um, to be spent on, on children's. And so that's where.
Materials.
Um, children's materials. Well, sometimes it's anything in the children's room. But, um, so that's where I have Nikki's budgets coming out of, is spending some of these funds instead of the municipal fund to try to, it's, it's. I've looked at other libraries, I sent an email out to other directors when I first became director, asking to see people's spreadsheets and things, and, um, it doesn't look like other libraries tend to have a million funds like this. They might have one gift and donations fund and, and endowment, but like, we have a lot of little things, which makes it unwieldy and weedy.
But in that inquiry and the responses you got, did you gather a sense as to where Newbury Town Library stands vis a vis other institutions, other libraries? For funds?
For funds? No, um.
No sense?
No, no, because they don't have, um.
So we'd be better off.
And they don't need them because it's entirely covered by the municipality. So when they have a fund such as gift and donations, the purpose of those donations, um, is not to go to operations. It's not, right, the purpose of, of having funds is to fund special things, extras, um, not to be doing operations. So, you know, it's, um, we have, we have a ways to go, but, you know, we'll get it.
Okay.
And we are getting there. I mean, I know I'm, I'm, it's stressful, and, um, but.
No, it's just different.
When I look back at the things that have now been kind of checked off, that are looking pretty good, we're, we're getting there.
No, it's good. I've got a couple of things I want to bring to the, the board's attention. We don't. We don't, I think, need to make any decisions at this point, but work these things through. We're sitting in the Kay Brown Room, which happily is what I'm going to be talking about. And let me direct your attention to this case over to your left, Erin, to your right, Beth. In that case, on the left-hand side of the case, top to bottom, we've got copies of town reports dating back to, well, the nineteenth century, the eighteenth century, almost not, but nineteenth century, on up to the present day, quite complete. Now, Leslie Haley, our town clerk, has a rather complete collection of town reports as well. And Leslie told me just a couple days ago that by statute, by law, she needs, town clerk of the municipality, needs to retain as complete a set of town reports as possible from the beginning of time, sixteen and thirty-five, right down to now, twenty-twenty-one. But only one set is needed. And what I want you all to think about is whether, first of all, first things first, Leslie has offered to take those boxed reports that are at the upper end of the shelf and consolidate them with any which may be missing from her own collection. There are a couple of late nineteenth-century reports, eighteen-seventies, eighteen-eighties, which she doesn't have, which we do have. So I think board needs to think about whether, first of all, we need to consult with the Newbury Historical Commission about repositioning these reports, consolidating them with Leslie's, recognizing that we need only one copy of these reports by statute. And could we then contemplate disposing of the surplus copies? And disposing of the stuff on the lower half of the shelves, which are more duplicates, triplicates even, particularly of twentieth-century stuff and twenty-first as well.
Well, I have a suggestion.
Please?
When you talk about disposing, these may be auction items or some way to get money, more money into the town, into the library for people who collect ephemera. And once the town has everything, and once we fill in everything the town needs, we may have to discuss this with the town. I'm not sure how they'd feel about it. But I think that it could be a wonderful thing to do for the library, 'cause there are probably people who like this stuff, if we don't have to keep it here. Are they ever taken out?
No.
Usually materials can't be taken out.
No, I don't mean, I don't mean taking out bookshelves and looked at.
Oh, I, yeah.
Leslie told me that in her fourteen-year stewardship as town clerk, there have been exactly two inquiries about town reports, asked town reports. My thought would be, yes, totally, great idea. Ask Newbury Port Public Library, whether they had an archival center, Sharon Spielton, or being the archivist over there, they were well, whether there would be interest in consolidating any duplicates in their collection, because Newbury Port, of course, is part of Newbury up until seventeen and sixty-four, when the breakaway occurs. So these are things we, these are thoughts I want to put out there at the moment. Hold on a second. Okay, but if we consolidate our copies of town reports with Leslie, town clerk's copies, and get to the point of weeding out the duplicates and go to auction with them, offer them to Newbury Port Public, whatever, there is a kind of a quid pro quo. Leslie's got about six linear feet of town reports, which had been in storage in the Old Town Hall, well, on High Rope, which is currently the subject of conversation in town. What do we do with it? But back in the day, before town records moved over to where they are now in Kenway, these reports got mildewed, mildewed. And assistant town clerk at the time was Jen Forrester. Many of you know her, of course, and she's also secretary at the Newbury Historical Commission. And her thought was, we need to have these de-mildewed, and that was done, it was done professionally, at a cost of three and a half thousand dollars. And the de-mildewed reports were professionally wrapped, boxed, and labeled. What do you do now? The three thousand five hundred dollars came out of, if you look at town warrant, you'll see that there's an allocation to the town meeting, or requested the town meeting every year for archival preservation. It runs ten to fifteen thousand, depending. But anyway, that's where the money came from, came out of town clerk budget for that item. So Leslie says, great, I'll take your reports if you'll take these things and get them out of my office. I'm tired of looking at them. So quid pro quo, think about that. Think about consolidating and then disposing, auctioning is the case maybe, but...
So she's asking for us to store them?
Yeah, give them a home.
Okay.
Give them a home. We filled, I think, two of the shelves.
How many shelves?
I'm sorry?
How many shelves?
He said six feet, six foot and a half feet.
Oh, okay.
It's not that much.
No, it isn't.
If you check this out.
They're in two boxes, about to speak. And, you know, part of me says, the stuff is online. Leslie came to me a number of weeks ago and said, here are photo pictures of a couple of reports I've run across in my office, and should I be, should I keep them? What should we do? So I went to something called the Massachusetts Library and started, I've gone. These are reports which were required by the great and general quote of the Commonwealth back in the nineteenth century of executive branches of the government. Agriculture in one case, commerce and industry in another case, tracking committees. I suppose nowadays you have all these hearings and whatnot, supervisory hearings. But then they were looking for a report every other year, just like Texas. But anyway, still is. But, so, they were. They were available online from the Massachusetts Document Library. And so, you know, here it is, Leslie. They're available. She said, good, they're gone. So that kind of thing sets the stage for the conversation about the town reports and what all we do with them.
Can I ask that question?
Yeah.
She is wanting us to take six feet of records, or did I get them in the...
No.
That's right?
Yeah.
Into the building?
Here.
Here. We're bursting at the, so I do...
These are gone. Those come in.
It's just...
So why?
Do we know it's six foot and a half feet?
Nope. Well, I wanna, 'cause we've been talking about completely revamping this room and trying to get it in order, so I, I, um, I guess I'd wanna think carefully about what we're bringing in, 'cause we're trying to get stuff out to make space and make usable space.
And you said they were online?
Well...
So why is she...
No, those, those two reports, which you brought my attention to.
Oh, oh, okay.
From the Agriculture, Commerce, and Industry Committees from the eighteen-eighties.
Okay.
So, but yes, a lot of this stuff is...
I'm all in favor.
And so there isn't room, is she concerned about getting, things getting mildewed again? Or now they're all professionally wrapped, so we don't have to worry? Doesn't she, she doesn't have six foot and a half feet? I mean, by law, she's supposed to have, store this stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're worried about space, it's not...
We should be giving us materials the public can access, so they're no longer wrapped.
Well, they will be when you unwrap them, but they're in archival boxes. This is a collection of archival boxes, twelve by four, by about eight and a half inches deep. That cart behind you, those are the contributions which the Esser family brought us after Ruthie died. There are relevant items there relative to the creation of images of our past, the bound, the bound volume of photographs, which were put together in nineteen eighty-five. The mechanicals are over there, next to the, next to the, what do you call it there? The microfiche reader, and there's a whole bunch of other stuff over there. In these two file cabinets is still more source material for the images of our past.
And in all of that, I'd love to make more accessible to the public.
Absolutely.
This flows right into the collections policy.
Doesn't it?
Yep.
Because we're holding all this stuff that never gets, never gets looked at, touched, or anything.
Right.
And the question is, to what end and for whose use? And is there a better location where people might use them than, than sitting in a kind of town library in a small town in New England? Are there, are there historians that would love to get their hands on this stuff? I don't know.
Consider these New England genealogical publications behind Erin and Margaret. Do we have to have them? No. Consider the publication of the Essex Institute. Do we have to? It's all online now. Do we really want it? Do we need it here?
Okay.
Well, some people might.
Right.
But nobody does trading with us.
But not here.
And if we're able to access it on that computer, which is, I think is what you're saying, then these areas could be sort of better storing other things.
Yeah.
Maybe?
Yeah.
Because I do see a value, like the Ruthie Esser things over there, you know, this town loves, would love to see them, and I would love to have it in much better display. It's interesting stuff.
But the Esser stuff and all of this other stuff is consonant with our historical collections policy, which we reviewed and approved back last summer.
Right.
And, you know, two other things which, in this history or historical vein come forward, one is the rug, which is in the case behind you guys, again, wrapped in the plastic wrapper there, which was donated by Mrs. Brown.
Which we discovered was gonna cost, what, ten K to...
Yeah. Yes. Oh, and, yeah.
Mount, properly mount and protect.
Yeah, but you know, we were talking about mounting it and hanging it out there, and another school of thought is you don't wanna put it anywhere to ultraviolet it, even if you put a sunshade in front of the darn thing. And then what's the point? It dilutes the colors. And the other, the other item we've been offered is the Newbury spinning wheel, which was auctioned out to one of the members of the Historical Commission, Lon Hackleister, at the Stora Damon, can't find the third name, sorry.
Barton.
Barton, auctioned done in the summer of twenty eighteen down at the Lower Green. So, you know, do we wanna take a spinning wheel and hang it up here with our dragons? I don't know, but that's, anyway, new business, but we digress.
Okay. That it?
Well, for the moment. I'm sure there's other stuff somewhere. Okay, we'll look through our keys, and you'll get a key to that.
I'm not too worried.
The intent was to provide it, and, okay, guys. The town is probably going to move, as I mentioned to Beth earlier, voting out of the library, because it's too small, the library's too small. Well, you were here. You came through.
Who was here? It was perfectly fine.
Yeah, elbow to elbow, though.
Was it while I was there?
When I was here. Yeah.
And it was, it was packed at one time? I came in right before eleven, like, I already made it...
It was packed.
In the middle of the day?
It was odd days.
Yeah.
Very busy.
I was, I was by the firehouse, and there was nobody there.
Maybe they distributed different lines.
About eleven o'clock AM.
There was a lot of early voting and absentee voting, but especially early. And those of you who voted early folded your document, the ballot, into fourths. And in every town, including Newbury, which used the same system, there were repeated, repeated jams of paper and the ballot box filled up with...
We folded them in fourths?
Did you have trouble with the writing machine?
I remember a few mails, if you were doing a mail...
Oh, a mailer, okay.
Started after you left.
Must have been hard.
It was mine, my fault. I didn't turn it over to them.
A mechanic's a talent.
I'm like, I was distracted.
Did they go to the school?
Such an idiot.
Farmland.
One house, like, maybe you should get them back.
Part, department. Yours will remain precinct one, will stay where it is on Morgan Ave, until, of course, that has to be rebuilt, and we'll worry about that later.
Is that your precinct? You're in Morgan Ave, in that precinct?
Yes.
I thought you were in Byfield.
I'm living, no, Old Town.
We have three Byfields on East Trustee and two Old Towners, so, oh, Terry's Palm Island, of course. We have a good balance of the town, three, the three villages, but, anyway. Okay, what action items do we need to tend to, Erin, before...
No more tonight.
Break this up.
That is it.
No, but going forward, what are we going to do?
Going forward, we're going to, I need you all to vote, to look through and edit if you so choose, the long-range plan for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven.
Those drafts which you gave us?
Yep. I can email it if that's better. And I will also have, it's too rough right now, so I do, a draft of the budget request. And for that, for that to get approved, I need, there's some financial spreadsheets and things involved of doing that one, so a little more, it's not just a narrative. There's a financial component that's involved. So I don't know that I will have that ready for you on the thirtieth. I will absolutely have it ready for you on December fourteenth, because it's due on the nineteenth.
Can you send it as a Word doc?
Yes.
Hey, it is what it is.
And then I can send you, you already have the community room policy update to work on. Home delivery policy update. Should I bother sending that this time? It's an awful lot of reading. I can put that on.
I've got a lot on my plate, as I told you, so I'm not gonna be...
Yeah, okay, I'll say twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Although it is ready. And then I think that should be it.
If you could find the citation.
Yes.
For the Massachusetts personnel policy, I would value pepping that.
I will.
Why should we be an outlier? You know, it's not fair. Okay, guys, we beat ourselves up enough.
Thank you.
All right.
Sorry, that was a lot.
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, right.
Hold on.